Good evening, everyone. Seven o'clock, 7:01. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's Monday, June 15th, 7:01. We have Pastor Phil Manginelli with the square here tonight to give the invocation and pledge. Everybody, please rise.
Thank you for having me. Would you join me in prayer? God, we're calling you tonight. It has such a unique time in our nation and in our city, and we ask for your leadership and your guidance, for your grace and your mercy and your justice. Lord, I ask that the power of your love and the power of the Holy Spirit would fall on our city, that you would steer us towards justice and truth. And, God, we come to you and ask for your forgiveness wherever we have given over to systemic issues of pain and hatred. Lord, we ask that you would move in mercy, that you would give all of our civic authorities wisdom to create a new future, God, of unity and of oneness. We come humble, and we ask for your help. Lord, these are real moments where we need divine wisdom and leadership. So would you bless our city of Smyrna? Would you move on our council and our leadership, on our police and our authorities? God, would every single person who lives here be loved, be honored, and be safe? We need you in this hour, Jesus. We ask for your help. In your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being with us this evening. Item two is agenda changes. We have none. Item three is the mayoral report. I've got a few things to go over. The governor last week had a new executive order. Among other things, it increased gathering sizes allowed from 25 to 50 people, removed some restrictions, and made it easier for restaurants and bars to operate, enabled professional and amateur sports to resume, and several other provisions. And so I wanted to give an update on Smyrna facilities, what's open, what's not, when you can expect coming up. We have fire, police, headquarters are both open, public works, the lobby is open, City Hall is open. The museum will be later this month or early July. They're preparing that now. The library, open to the public today. There's a few provisions, limited numbers at any time, subject to CDC guidelines. They're asking everybody to use the self-checkout kiosk. There's no chairs at most of the tables, and there's modified hours, and you can check our website for any of that information. And then increased services will begin early in July. Community center open today with limited usage. You can use the fitness equipment, racquetball courts, modified programs and hours, and also subject to CDC guidelines. Obviously, we're using this room and other spaces for meetings right now so that we can spread out a little bit, but we'll get back to somewhat normal as we go. Event space in the community center available as of today for limited use, and next phase of opening will be early July. Bronner Hall, Taylor Bronner House, Reed House, and Aunt Fanny's Cabin, all available today for limited use within CDC guidelines. The Wolf Center will be early July. They're getting that ready. That's been closed up to this point because of the shelter-in-place order. It'll have modified programs and hours. Tollison Pool, they're preparing that now. It'll open later this month with modified hours and subject to all the CDC regulations. And the recycling center is open right now, two days a week. It'll transition from two to three days a week later this week, and then three to four days a week the last week of the month. So just wanted to let you all know kind of where we're at facilities-wise. The next thing, I want to recognize all of the peaceful events and demonstrations that we've had here in the city over the past few weeks. I want to thank all of the participants for being peaceful and those event organizers who have reached out to the city and the police department to communicate the details of the events. That's extremely helpful as we prepare for these and get ready to help. And I want to thank the men and women of our Smyrna Police Department for all of their hard work and overtime efforts to keep this community safe. And I know you all are working so hard and tired and really working a lot. We appreciate all of your efforts. This city government, your council, and I have made clear that no discrimination of any kind is acceptable or tolerated in this city. We've committed to having the longer, deeper conversations that lead to change, and we've begun outlining some of the action items and timelines that I wanted to share with you tonight. On Thursday, at our council committee meeting, we discussed planning professionally facilitated community discussions on race and plan to begin that process in July. We also discussed the timing for the continuation of the discussion on the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance. That will occur in July for a couple of reasons. Number one, I want to make sure everybody's able to participate in that conversation, and our committee meeting on Thursday was still within the shelter-in-place for the medically fragile and everybody over age 65. So the other thing is that hate crimes legislation is currently, the legislature resumed today, and hate crimes legislation is being considered, and I hope that will pass, but we'll see what the environment is at the end of the month when the legislature adjourns. So we're looking at having public meetings to discuss the nondiscrimination ordinance and make sure that everybody has an opportunity to participate, and we're looking at doing that the middle of the week of July 6th. And the Smyrna Police Department has also made clear that no discrimination of any kind is acceptable or tolerated. And over the past several years, all the way from hiring to training to policies, your police department is one of the most diverse in the state and miles ahead of many others in training those policies and procedures that prevent discrimination and excessive use of force. And I've gotten a lot of emails, and I know my colleagues on the council have too, over the last week or two on a group who's outlining policies called eight can't wait, and it's eight policies that they're asking police departments to implement that will help reduce excessive use of force. I'm happy to say that under the leadership of Chief Bennett, our city now satisfies all eight of those policies. And we've asked whether or not we have, we've been asked whether we have a citizen review panel that will look at use of force events, and also pleased to report that Chief Bennett has reestablished our citizen review panel. They'll meet quarterly to review any instances involving use of force. So as we move forward, we'll continue to identify areas that we can improve. I think there's always room for improvement, but I really couldn't be more proud of our city, its people, and our first responders during these uncertain times. Third, I want to talk a little bit about the annexation study that we had. There's been a lot of news reports and closer look at the study and the results of that study that were reported to council at a committee meeting about six weeks ago. Some of the reports make it look like Smyrna intends to aggressively annex land next to the city limits to achieve a population of 90,000 people, and I want to clear up any misunderstanding about what that study was and where we are in that process. It was just a study. It was not a proposal. It was originally conceived to deal with some of the unincorporated islands that we have in the city that create challenges for us for service delivery. This council hasn't closely examined the results of that study or come up with any recommendations on if or how to proceed. And in fact, on Thursday, I appointed a committee to begin looking at and analyzing the results of that study and make a recommendation to the full council. So I'd ask everyone to just please sit back and relax, understand that your city's not out for some big, secret land grab or anything to that effect, as has been represented in some of the press. We're just simply beginning to look at this. So I look forward to those conversations. And lastly, I just want to thank everybody again for your efforts in supporting, support Smyrna. We've now eclipsed almost, I think we're almost $160,000, and we've helped feed hundreds of families during these tough times, and the generous spirit of this community is really something to be proud of. We have a real special place here, and that's been a fantastic program. Concludes my mayoral report. Next on the agenda is land issue zonings annexations. Item 4A, 2020-132. This is a public hearing. Zoning Request Z20-003, modification of site plan and building elevations for a 75-unit senior living facility, 3.1 acres, land lot 606, 4225 East-West Connector, One Street Development LLC. And I know, I understand there's some people here that may want to speak to this. If you want to speak to this or even think you want to speak to this, could you please come up and be sworn in by our city attorney, Scott Cochran? Anybody here that might want to speak on this agenda item, just come on over here, and he'll swear you in so that you can speak a little bit later. We're going to invite Rusty Martin, or is it Joey coming up? Joey's going to come up and present the item, and then we're going to discuss it, and then we'll invite the public to come up and make comment. Thank you, sir. Joey?
Good evening. This is zoning case Z20-003. Applicant is One Street Development LLC. This was submitted in February 14th of this year, scheduled tonight for zoning amendment hearing. This property is located on East-West Connector. It's a little over three acres. It's a vacant wooded lot currently. Proposed use is a 75-unit independent senior housing development. This was approved in May of 2019. What we're looking at tonight is a site plan amendment. Zoning of RHRPD is remaining the same. This is a map of the future land use. It's currently high-density residential. That's not changing. That's already been approved last year. This was the, actually, the original site plan. That's the unit composition, 30% one-bedroom, 70% two-bedroom, and then the market rate structure. A lot of these are affordable through grants, through the DCA. Originally, it was a one-four-story building on East-West Connector and a three-story building on the west side. The setbacks are 25 front, 25 side, 40-foot rear. Those will remain the same. And then the access was a little further west on the original site plan. Had a community garden. That'll remain. It's just in a different location. And then the underground stormwater was at the rear. There's a stream buffer on the east side, and then a gas line easement near the north And then there's a sidewalk connection to Silver Comet Trail that's proposed. The original request had a front setback reduction from 75 to 25 feet, side setback from 40 to 25 feet, minimum building height from four stories to three stories. So those first two will remain. Now that third variance isn't needed because it'll be one-four-story building. Had my labels wrong. Actually, the first one was the approved site plan. This is the proposed site plan. So now it's one-four-story building, same unit composition. So the reason we're bringing it here tonight is because on the east side, instead of being three stories, it'll be four stories. So we wanted people to be aware and be able to comment if needed. Same setbacks as original. New driveway access location, new community area location, and then the underground stormwater engine will be in the rear, just organized a little differently. Stream buffer and gas line easement are still where they originally were. So what we're looking at tonight is just the consolidation of the building from two buildings into one four-story building. These are the proposed elevations. Pictures of the subject property. Pictures of adjacent properties. Staff recommends approval of the zoning amendment for the development of 75-unit age-restricted senior community facility, density of 24.11 units per acre. Carried over the zoning conditions from Z19-008. Standard conditions regarding the composition of architectural materials, retention pond has to be screened, utilities are underground. The developers responsible for any traffic improvements. Be a decel lane into the entrance of the subdivision, brick pavers at the subdivision entrance, no debris can be buried, and they'll have to comply with our tree ordinance. Landscape plans have to be signed by a registered landscape architect, and all yards or common areas are sotted. Development will have the following building setbacks, front 25, side 25, rear 40. They'll have to meet all fire access requirements, water and sewer improvements, stormwater improvements. They're responsible for a 10-foot landscape buffer. They'll seek approval from Cobb County for the sidewalk connection to the Silver Comet Trail. Trash dumpsters will have rubber tops and be appropriately screened. They'll have low-intensity environmental lighting for parking area. And they will be bound to the elevation submitted in February, and then the site plan submitted in February. Finally, they'll have to have a fire truck turning analysis to meet all our fire access requirements. Fire access road shall not exceed an established grade of the IFC. Structure will be required to be compliant with IFC 510. It will be protected by automatic fire sprinkler system, and the building will include all necessary fire protection features as required by code. And here is the proposed site plan. I'll leave it here if you have any questions.
Yeah, thanks for the review of that, Joey. Just a couple quick questions for you. I have a question about the wall on the kind of west, or the west side, I guess, of the property there. Can you walk me through what's going to be on that side since it's a neighborhood just adjacent to that property line?
Yeah, applicant probably described that better, but I think the grade is so steep right there that, I mean, there are such different elevations, the adjoining property and this property, that it should not be an issue.
Okay. Okay.
Invite the applicant up in just a moment. You'll be able to...
Yeah. Thanks.
And Joey, I have a question. I'm not sure if this would be for you or for the applicant, but I recall that there was a lot of discussion around access to the trail system on the property.
Yes, ma'am.
Will that still be there?
Yeah, anything requires approval from Cobb County because it's there right-of-way, but I believe they're still going to work on that access to the Silver Comet Trail.
Okay. I was thinking it was included in our plans before, but, okay. Thank you.
There's no other questions for Joey. I'll invite the applicant up here. I believe Kevin Moore is here representing the applicant.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's good to see you. Thank you for undertaking this public hearing tonight for this project and this request. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of One Street Residential in this application for simply a site plan modification. As Joey reviewed with you, in May of 2019, the city approved the rezoning application of One Street Residential to rezone this property for a total of 80 age-restricted homes and units for this community. That's an age restricted of 62 years of age and older. One Street Residential is a longtime developer, owner, manager of age-restricted senior homes and communities in metropolitan Atlanta, and they have communities such as what we're proposing here in Smyrna, in Johns Creek, Woodstock, Brookhaven, just to name a few others, that are highly successful for what they do. Because they do this, they do this for a living and know exactly what they're doing in this particular area and providing this type of very needed housing option for seniors. That's what was approved in 2019 in May. After approval, they began their very more detailed engineering work that ultimately revealed that there was more heavier rock located in a portion of the property that necessitated relooking at how the site plan overall would work, and it resulted in the proposed new site plan that you see before you. Really, just two buildings, combined them into a single building, and then moved the entrance further east on East-West Connector, actually a little closer to Camp Highland, are the two major things that occurred with this site plan. All other components still remain in place, including the trail connection is still a component, part of this plan, subject to the county's review, but that's an important part for us, an important part for their future residents as well. In addition, we had met with, as part of the original rezoning effort, had extensive meetings with Creekside Advinnings. That's the residential project, townhome project that's adjacent to this property to the west. And prior to our submittal of the site plan modification, we revisited that with them and went over that with them, and the message back from them is they were still satisfied with our proposed project. That side of the project hasn't changed, other than it's a little higher, but it still contained a wall. It's a retaining wall that's there, but then there's extensive landscaping on the outside of that retaining wall as well, and that's noted in the staff's comments and is included in our plans as well. So that it's extensive landscaping and wall with appropriately aesthetically pleasing and so forth, and that all information had been shared with Creekside Advinnings as well. One of the things with this access and the change of the access, it actually, from our engineer's standpoint, improved access because it allowed for greater site distance. You can see now, this is a, and continues to be a restricted access point. It's right in, right out only, but you can, when a car's leaving the site and looks back towards Camp Highland, now you can see all the way to that intersection. Before, you could not see all the way to the intersection. There was sufficient site distance, but not all the way to Camp Highland. And so it's actually an improved, an improvement in terms of the access location with the appropriate deceleration lane as well. We have reviewed all of the staff conditions. They're the same that we've had from the original rezoning and a few additional ones from fire. We're in agreement with each one of those and are very well aware of those. And also just want to remind this council that this project also accomplished some important factors and goals that you have had as a city in the comprehensive plan for senior housing, and that is to consider ways to offer reduced price point and new quality senior housing, encourage the construction of affordable senior housing, incorporate a park into every neighborhood, or provide safe pedestrian and bicycle access to neighborhoods and larger community parks, and ensure that infill housing development of any type is compatible. All of those goals are accomplished here as part of your comprehensive plan and goals for continuing to make sure that you, as a city, provide acceptable quality options for senior housing, and which this has done. That's why it was approved 7-0 by the city council just over a year ago, and we certainly urge and respectfully request your approval of the site plan modification here tonight. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as representatives of One Street Residential. Happy to answer anything you may have. And thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Moore?
Just to state, thank you for certainly reaching out to the residents. They communicated back with me, and we're generally pleased with the conversation, I believe. So unless something's changed, and certainly thanks for the discussion about the wall access and the entry point to the facility. Those are two of my pressing concerns, just being very intimately familiar with that area. That's something that I was definitely concerned about, so I definitely appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. We wanted to make sure of that, and our engineer did confirm it. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Any other questions or comments?
I've got a good question. It might be for Joey. Let me, Kevin, you might have an answer to it, but just I see on the, turning into the property, we have a deceleration lane, but I see coming out of it, we do not have an acceleration lane. And as we know, speeds are pretty quick on East-West Connector. We had, had we discussed that, or was that a recommendation from engineering not to have that, or do you have any background on that?
I do have some background on that as well, and I'm sure Joey can confirm, but it was one of the items that during staff review, they identified and said, "We need to look at that." And so that was studied. Ultimately, Cobb DOT did not recommend there being an acceleration lane in this location. They didn't believe it was warranted and didn't want that there. A lot of times it becomes, at least in Cobb DOT's mind, a negative on traffic impact as opposed to a positive. And so ultimately, it was decided that that was not an improvement that was needed or warranted here, based on their recommendation. But it was very much evaluated.
So you're talking about the acceleration lane coming out of the property?
That's correct. And partly is because this is a restricted access already. It's a right in, right out. So that right out lane serves that purpose generally, what you're speaking to. And that's where the improved site distance helps as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Of course.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone from the public who has any comments on this specific issue, please come forward. Nobody? All right. We'll close the public hearing section. Any other comments from council? Any other discussion? All right. We'll turn it over to Mr. Louis Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, with that great review, move to approve the zoning request Z20-003, the modification, as read from One Street Development LLC.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Austin. All those in favor, please vote by a show of hands. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item B, Resolution 2020-05, authorize the acquisition of a portion of 2380 Ventura Road and a portion of 531 Wendy Hill Road by all lawful means for improvements to Wendy Hill Road. This authorization includes adopting a resolution and declaration of taking. Either the mayor or the mayor pro temp are authorized to execute such documents and all other documents incident to these acquisitions. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening. This agenda item is to authorize the acquisition of a portion of 2380 Ventura Road and a portion of 531 Wendy Hill Road by all lawful means for improvements to Wendy Hill Boulevard. This is one of the final acquisitions necessary for the Wendy Hill Boulevard project and consists of an acquisition of 3,183 square feet of right-of-way, 1,436 square feet of temporary construction easement, and 1,931 square feet of construction easement to tie the driveway into the new road construction. Staff does recommend approval.
This item is Mr. Tim Gould. Any discussion, questions, Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is all part of the continued work on Wendy Hill, and it's always challenging to acquire extra property that's needed, but it's all part of the project, and I believe the landowners are comfortable with the agreements worked out by our city attorney. So we thank him for all his hard work. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item 4B, RES 2020-05, as previously read.
Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 6-1 with Councilwoman Wilk... It's approved six-one with Councilwoman Wilkinson voting in the negative. Item five is privileged licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. Six-A, 2020-190, award RFQ 20-022 Energy Performance Contract Services to Schneider Electric, 11475 Great Oaks Way, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30022, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Just full disclosure, I'm going to recuse myself from this. My wife represented one of the companies who was trying to get this contract. They did not get it, but I have not been involved at all in any of this process, and I won't be now. So I'm going to turn it over to our mayor pro tem, Mr. Tim Gould. I'll leave, and they'll deal with this item, and then I'll come back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background on item six-A, please.
The City of Smyrna requested qualifications from qualified energy resources companies to provide a comprehensive citywide infrastructure renewal, including but not limited to energy and water efficiency improvements for facilities owned by the City of Smyrna. Sixteen firms requested the request for qualifications document, and we received four responses. The proposals were scored by staff from Environmental Services, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and Finance. Staff also held interviews with the top three scoring firms, and based on the interviews and references contacted, staff recommends award of the RFQ to Schneider Electric. The team unanimously agreed that Snyder's selection was in the best interests of the city. Also, Snyder is named one of the leading energy services companies in the market. With that, this, the recommendation, as mentioned previously, is that the award of the RFQ go to Snyder Electric.
Thank you, Ms. Sadler Jones. If I can ask Janet to come up and give us some background on the, on the project? This has been a, project has been in work for some time, and, Jay, give us maybe a little bit of history of who all has been involved in the staff side and what the overall goal is, please.
Absolutely. So as was indicated, about a year or so ago, the city started looking at doing more with environmental stewardship and energy and water conservation, and this January decided to issue an RFQ, which you have before you. Staff involved, in particular, were the directors of Finance, Environmental Services, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, in addition to building and operations, purchasing, and I feel like I'm forgetting somebody. But the, the purpose, the goal of this is to, for the city, a plan with options on it to move forward with doing energy and water conservation measures. It's something we've talked about for a while, and now just seeing the opportunity to move ahead with it. And staff, the staff on the team unanimously agreed that Schneider Electric was the best for them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Janet? No? Okay. So with that, would somebody like to make a motion?
First of all, let me say, I believe this is a good project. I'm very concerned about the contract for the project and spending $59,000 for, for the study that we're going to get for this in this, in this day and time. And it is, essentially, it is a study for $59,000 to evaluate what we can do to, to save energy. But I've read it, and I've spoken with our, our legal counsel about it on a couple of different occasions, and I'd like to make a motion.
If I could, Corky, just interrupt. This motion needs to include the mayor pro tem in the, in the wording? Sorry to interrupt.
Instead of the mayor?
Yes, yeah, correct. Sorry, before you write it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like a motion for item six-A, 2020, to award RFQ 20-022 Energy Performance Audit Contract Services to Schneider Electric, 11475 Great Oaks Way, Alpharetta, Georgia, and authorize the mayor pro tem to sign and, sign and execute all related documents with the following provisions. And I think some of these are already, we have modified the contract, and I think some of these are already in the contract, but I'm going to read them anyway. One is that the splot, upcoming splot must pass. Two is the city is able to sit at the table to assist with the selection of the project scope on each of these projects that the company chooses. Number three, the city will have 12 months to select a project for construction after receiving the audit. Number four, that the city may essentially terminate the contract after the 12-month period has expired for a payment of $59,200. And number five, that the city and this council, anyone on this council, has a right to review all solicitations for contractors and bids received for each of the contracts through our general contractor. And I make that in form of a motion.
Do we have a second? Mr. Wheaton, second? Please vote by a show of hands. Vote is five-one with Ms. Wilkinson in the negative. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, for handling that. I understand it passed, and I'll just say, I'm glad that that process is over with and that we can get, get moving on implementing some of our energy efficiency and environmental stewardship priorities. That's something I'm really interested in doing and glad we're moving forward. Item B, 2020-195, award bid RFP 20-020 Community Center renovation Phase Two to the lowest qualified bidder, Everlast Construction Group, 1355 Union Hill Industrial Court, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30004, in the amount of $372,306.12 to be funded by CDBG and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The City of Smyrna received bids for a unit price contract for renovation of the community center main level, men's and women's locker rooms, restrooms, and shower rooms located here in the community center. Thirteen contractors submitted bids. Staff recommends award to the lowest bidder, Everlast Construction Group LLC, in the amount of $372,306.12. This project will be managed by Foley Design, and it will be funded through the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG.
Okay, this item is Councilman Lindley's. Councilman Lindley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Jones. I think it's a long overdue project. I know this, this building, in my mind, is still new, but coming up on 30 years. So with that, motion do pass is presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero. Thank you. Item C, 2020-191, approval to reclassify the chief building official position from a pay grade 23 to a pay grade 25. Ms. Sadler Jones?
The chief building official salary range is significantly below the other municipal governments in the metro Atlanta area. The proposed reclassification will bring the city's chief building official salary closer to the industry norm and keeps Smyrna competitive with respect to this highly skilled position. The chief building officials' position is in high demand with very few qualified workers. If Smyrna were to lose our current chief building official, the city may have a very difficult time finding a qualified replacement with the experience and skills of a plan reviewer, as well as a building inspector at the current salary range. The community development director recommends approval of the proposed reclassification for the chief building official position.
Thank you. And this item is Mr. Corky Welch's.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Sadler Jones has done a very good job of explaining what's, what's going on here. I'll make a motion to approve item six-C, 2020-191, approval to reclassify the chief building official position from a pay grade 23 to a pay grade 25.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero. Thank you. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is the consent agenda. Ms. Sadler Jones, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the May 28, 2020 Committee of the Hole Meeting Minutes. Item B, approval of the June 1, 2020 Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. Item C, approval of the June 1, 2020 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. And item D, approval of the appointment of Ward Two resident Melba Barberan to the Smyrna Housing Authority. This is a five-year term that expires May 31, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Sadler Jones. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, I move to approve the consent agenda as previously read.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilman Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. It's like it's approved six-one with Councilwoman Wilkinson voting in the negative. Number nine is ward and committee reports. And before we get to that, I just want to, one thing, when we're talking about all our facilities opening and the next phase of all that, just, I'd ask everybody to please be mindful still of your, in your interactions with others, and to wear face coverings. That's coming from the CDC and the administration. I think that's extremely important. I appreciate everybody doing that this evening. Just as a point of reference, the Senate, the State Senate Health and Human Services Chair is a physician, and yesterday, when he opened his committee hearing, he said that if two people were in a doctor's office, a small space, for 15 minutes, and one of them had COVID and one of them did not, that the, that the probability of that person getting COVID was over 98%. He said if the same two people were in the same situation where both of them were wearing masks, the chance of, of the second person getting COVID would be less than 2%. So it's very important that we continue to do that. With that, I'll turn it over to Councilman Pickens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing specific to report tonight, but I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and making these council meetings a priority.
Mr. Austin Wagner?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I think, reiterate what the mayor just spoke to, is continue to be safe with our health as we're opening things back up here and around the state. While we're in a place that the governor has decided that we can start to open things back up, we know that cases are still happening, and there still can be transmission, and we want to be careful to all those around us, continue to wear face masks and all of that. And just on top of that as well, I know during this time when we're talking about all of our health, it's important to think about all of our mental health as well. During these times, I know when we can feel lonely, depressed, anxious, all of that, and know that many of us can, can feel the same things. And if you're feeling those ways, definitely don't be ashamed to reach out and take some time to take care of your mental health as well with everything that's going on right now.
Thank you, Mr. Travis Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of notes. At the Committee of the Hole Meeting on Thursday evening, this body moved to approve initial funding to start the renovation of the Mount Zion Cemetery, which is over on Hawthorne Avenue. Long overdue, and hopefully we can get to a place of restoration by the end of the year by that important landmark in our community. And then just a note in Ward Three, particularly in Williams Park in Smyrna Heights, some traffic calming petitions underway. So I encourage anyone here this evening or listening online to please visit those petitions and make your voice heard. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, I see several people in the audience out here that don't have to be here, and, and we do appreciate you coming out. Some of you may have something to say here in a few minutes, but, but it's important for, for you to come out and be involved, and we just appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Some of you may be wondering why I voted against the consent agenda items, and really, following the last council meeting on June 1st, I requested that my questions and the responses from the city attorney be reflected in the public record of the meeting minutes. And then when I received the draft on Thursday, it was a summary, but it, but there was a sentence in there that didn't really reflect the, the question that I had and the, and the response that I received in the public hearing. And I asked that the minutes be considered to be amended, and that was rejected. So that was the reason that I voted against that tonight. That was from the public meeting minutes from the last public council meeting on June 1st. And I also want to add that I appreciate a lot of the citizens coming here tonight. I see some of Ward Five people here, and, and thank y'all for taking the time to come. With that, I yield.
Mr. Tim Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to acknowledge some of the really positive demonstrations we've had here in the city, and I just want to thank the folks that are doing it, because I think the goal really is to try to improve the lives of our fellow residents. And, and great appreciation for that being done in a positive way, in a safe way. I know there's been a lot of interactions with the, the chief of police and his staff to try to coordinate these things so they all go off safe and, and in a productive way. So very, very thankful for that. I think it's a great, great thing for our city, and resident involvement and activity is, is positive. So, thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Louis Wheaton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just to echo a little bit of what Mr. Gould just said, I've been really inspired to see the really good social action by so many people in our community, particularly our students, middle school, high school, a lot of people that are engaged, a lot of different voices. And it's really been encouraging, and particularly some people that have reached out to me in Ward Seven with concerns and really motivated interest in, in helping to make our, our community even stronger. And some of the things that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, in your mayor report, I'm really excited to see some of those changes coming and those programs and, and resolutions that we'll be working on over the next few days and weeks to make our city even greater. Just also to reiterate, you know, we're definitely still under a pandemic. Don't forget that. Be safe. Do all the things, even and exceeding to what you need to do to stay safe and keep any resurgence as low as possible, probability of it as low as possible for our community. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Number, item number 10 is show cause hearings. We have none. Item 11 is citizen input. I'll ask that anybody who has anything to say, come on up to the podium, identify yourself and your address and your topic, and then we'll clean it after.
3459 Shawnee Trail. What I'd like to speak tonight, and I can't remember if I spoke in front of the new people on the council, is this term limits. There's a candidate now running for Congress, and on advertising on TV, one of his platforms is that he's going to push for term limits in Congress. Now, Marietta passed and gave the people in Marietta a chance to express their opinion on term limits, and it passed. I brought it up before to this council, before the new council, and I'm hoping with this new council, there's more openness compared to past ones, which shows in the way people vote here. We've got to get people involved in decision-making and feeling like their opinions mean something on a subject. And I'd like this council to consider putting out on the referendum, on the ballot, for term limits. If Marietta can do it, this is a great step. a great step to show how Marietta is far ahead of Smyrna when it comes to open government. And I hope you consider doing this, because the apathy in this city to me is as wide as the Grand Canyon when it comes to lack of knowledge. And the two best ways to start in the last three and a half years of this council is to have city town hall meetings every six months. And when a referendum comes up on something such as term limits, people have to feel, I've asked people, did you vote in the last election? People I know, and they said no. And I said, how come? Why vote? The city's going to do what they want, not what we want. That's an awful stigma. I got to remind you, the taxpayers pay your salary, not reverse. It's what the taxpayer and citizens want, not what this council wants. And I feel it's a very reasonable thing. Since Marietta did it, you should seriously consider having term limits on the ballot in November, or even before, whatever. It's only a thousand dollars to put it on. And this has got to be a great step forward in having the people express their opinions on a subject. I've had a lot of people say I'd look forward to that if the council ever gets serious to doing it. And I want to renew this request. And I hope somebody here calls me and tells me what your decision is. I've never got feedback after a subject of asking a question. That's not open government. It's called lack of communications. It's a two-way street. Thank you.
Anybody else that wishes to speak this evening? Please come forward. Good evening, sir. If you'll state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Johnny Robertson. My address is four oh one oh six, four oh one oh, four oh one oh three Shamrock Place, Maverton, Georgia. I moved here, and I used to live down the street at the park at Windy Hill. Though my first residence before I made relocation back to Georgia from Massachusetts. I moved here in two thousand and seven from Dorchester, Massachusetts. I ended up on Windy Hill Road at the park at Windy Hill Apartments. I'm a hundred percent disabled veteran. When I was going through the training of first-time home buyer program, I ended up at a house in Maverton. On my journey to next week, on where is the city government, come to find out, I live in a town that don't have a government, don't have a city government. Just so happened by the grace of God Friday, I think it was you, Mr. Councilmember, that was on TV about having Maverton, having, uh, Maverton converted into Smyrna as a city. I'm all for that, one hundred percent. Even if we had to march down and see the Governor Kemp himself, I would help lead the way because I have several incidents in my community. The most major drug bust that happened in Cobb County last year, it happened right across the street from my house. Oh, yes it did. You're talking about six hours that I could not leave my driveway. And I have noticed a whole lot of issues in the town of Maverton, in which people are getting away with cold-blooded murder on their houses. They flipping them, but they flipping them to the wrong individuals because I barely said because rented to my comrades out there. And the ones that they flipping their houses to and renting them out to, if someone that are, put it like this, didn't go through the proper channels to become a U.S. citizen, that's where they going to. And I live right next door, and I'm the only one that's in my community that don't get no adequate rest because it's so much crickiness in Maverton. It's a shame, and that they don't have an overseer. And I felt really bad. And even when I do speak with my comrades that in the same program that I was in, the way you live at, it's nice. I said, but we don't have a government. They turns around and heads back the other way. And that's a shame. We don't need to deform no police department because the police department is one of my main assets. And we don't have a police department in Maverton, period. I depend on the police department and the fire department because my alarm system, my security system, is all, it's in contact with those people because all once my disability start, I am purely helpless. And that's ugly, that we don't have a city government. And we need a city government in Maverton. And if it's Smyrna on the list, if we're taken over, I'm all for it. And if you need a front leader to go down to Governor Kemp's office, I would lead that front. Thank you, and have a blessed day.
Yes, sir. And first of all, thank you for your service. Thank you for liking what we're doing here in Smyrna. And we'll be looking at the annexation study results and analyzing those. We appreciate your comments. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I live in twenty fifty-seven Lake Park Drive, but I'm moving to Spring Hill Parkway. And so I noticed that there is no district assigned to Spring Hill Parkway. It makes me kind of concerned to move there. So is there plans for, you know, assigning a district and a councilperson to Spring Hill Parkway?
That's just outside the city limits?
It says Smyrna on the address.
Right. It's a Smyrna address, but that's just outside the city limits. So we'll be looking at, we'll be looking at that area and others as part of this annexation study. But right now, that's not within our city limits.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So how does one like, so when I'm registered to vote, like, it still says Smyrna, but it's not, I don't have, I wouldn't have a councilperson?
You'll have a polling location through the, I guess, at the Cobb County Elections Office. You'll look through, figure out where you're assigned, but it will not be a city of Smyrna. Yeah, you won't be able to vote for a city council member or the mayor in Smyrna.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Mark Smith. I live on twenty-eight hundred Spring Creek Place. I'd like to draw attention or maybe bring up some information that people maybe are not aware of. But right now, Smyrna is getting some great cable network, but some of it's 5G. And 5G just happens to be dangerous. Now, a lot of people say, oh, the scientists wouldn't let anything dangerous happen to us. Well, turns out that in nineteen thirty, we had proof that cigarette smoking caused cancer. But we had a lot of cigarette smoking anyway. And big lobbies, big money, and our professionals, our doctors, who said, you know, pregnant women should smoke. It helps them relax. It wasn't until nineteen sixty-nine that we got a little sign on a package cigarette saying cigarette smoking may cause cancer. And now, every right-thinking person knows that cigarette smoking can cause cancer. But it wasn't for thirty or almost forty years that we had a warning about cigarette smoking causing cancer. Well, 5G causes all kinds of problems. It's electromagnetic energy, electromagnetic frequency, EMFs. Electromagnetic frequencies parallel what your body does. Your body sends messages to your DNA with electromagnetic frequency. It turns hormones off and on with electromagnetic frequencies. It makes you anxious, or it gives you headaches. It helps you relax. Well, the EMFs that right now that we know, there's a federal lawsuit. So it's no simple thing to do a federal lawsuit against the FCC. FCC, they say, is in criminal contempt because of their negligence in watching people's health. Now, it only affects your immune system. Well, your immune system is pretty important in times of COVID-19. It only affects your headaches. Well, who needs a headache at work, especially if you're working at home. And now we're putting 5G towers every five hundred feet in my neighborhood, right next to the senior citizens or next to the young people that are about to have children. It only affects fertility a little bit. Well, how many birth defects can we allow? What's allowable? In my family, we don't like birth defects. We don't like headaches. We don't like anxiety. We don't like electromagnetic frequency. Fluorescent lights affect schoolchildren, but it was okay because it saved lots of money. But now, seventy percent of our schoolchildren have a prescription for Adderall because of electromagnetic frequency. The fluorescent lights run at sixty cycles per second, and the only thing that in your body runs at sixty cycles per second is your brain. And that's the flight or fight state of your brain. It's not a relaxed state. And now kids are bouncing off the wall and they just can't learn. Instead of turning the fluorescent lights off or getting rid of them, we use prescription drugs. So now everybody should take prescription drugs. I was told that now that I'm sixty-five or sixty-six, that I should be on five medications per day. We've got to stop controlling people's lives with bad legislation just for the sake of money. If we have anything we can do, let's please stop 5G.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak? Let him clean the microphone first. Thank you. I think that was Richard Garland's phone that went off while Mr. Smith was speaking, so he can put Bob Donalds in the bucket, please. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Noble Dwaraka. I live at two five nine nine Bates Street in Ward Two in Rose Garden Hills. And I organized one of the protests going from Rose Garden Park to the Braves Stadium last Saturday. So before I go any further, I just want to give a shout out to the Smyrna Police Department that partnered with us, specifically Chief Bennett and Officer Defense. And so for me, protesting is like brand awareness. And it always has to be followed up with, you know, actionable steps and meaningful progress. And I've lived in Smyrna for about two and a half years so far. And seeing Rose Garden Hills, it means a lot to me, especially learning the history and meeting a lot of residents with different backgrounds. And so I would love to see more funding going into our neighborhood. There's a lot of dimly lit areas in the neighborhood. The park could use a few renovations. There's places that are completely unkempt. And as a taxpayer, I'd really appreciate seeing more investment going into a historical neighborhood such as Rose Garden Hills. And I'm available if you all, you know, want any suggestions. Shout out to Austin Wagner. So thank you again for hearing me out and looking forward to being more involved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for organizing that peaceful event. That was, that was really good. Other speakers? Anybody else want to come forward? Any comments?
Y'all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
With this thing?
Yes, sir.
Hey, my name's Robbie. I live at two six four zero Burt Street. I rent there. But I've been kind of an unofficial citizen of Smyrna my whole life. My grandma has lived literally right off of Spring Road for thirty years. Used to go to the day camp back at Tolleson Park Swimming Pool, you know, every summer. I lived a sandlot experience as a kid. And that's what, that's what I want to talk about is, I think some of the concerns that are, that the veteran gentleman brought up, are definitely things that plagued me as a kid, you know, growing up, getting into trouble, being around the wrong element. Twenty, almost thirty years ago, Smyrna was not a cool place to be. I remember growing, I remember going to parks and kids having guns there, you know? It was kind of unsafe, you know? And one of the things that really actually I benefited from were programs that were outside of this city, like the Big Brother Big Sister Program in Atlanta, Georgia. I don't, I don't know if that's a program that is around here. You know, I think that our, our community has always been beautifully diverse in Smyrna. That's something that, I mean, I took with me, took with me when I, when I moved away to go to college, to go to other places. And I just wondered, and I want to advocate for different community programs. I know that there's one at the Title One School at the street from, from my house. What is it? What's the name of the school? The Lowell Elementary School?
At Argyle?
Uh, not Argyle.
Or Smyrna Elementary?
Uh, not Hawthorne. It's right off, it's literally at dead ends into Burt Street. But basically, every Saturday or one Saturday a month, you can show up and talk to some of the kids. It's an ESOL program, and it actually helps the kids, you know? And I think that, I think that that kind of advocacy puts a value on a person's life that is unimaginable. I couldn't tell you if it wasn't for the different interventions in my life, I probably would end up doing, doing things I shouldn't, I shouldn't have been doing. I have done things I shouldn't have done. Yeah, and so, but this, this time period really, really, really led me to think and really led me to really pray and advocate for different community programs that we can do, such as the Big Brother Big Sister Program, or some type of intervention program, you know, between youth, at-risk youth, which is my main concern, and before they mature into adulthood, you know, into some of these schools. So, thank you. Thank you guys for your time.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Anybody else this evening would like to speak? All right. When I was going around committee reports, I didn't mean to, but I skipped over Ms. Adler Jones. Is there anything you wanted to know? Mr. Cochran? Okay. If there's no other items to be brought forward to this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at eight oh eight. Thank you, everybody, for being here.